For that, a general phone.
Debt services go over. This has to come out of your precinct one, precinct two, precinct three, precinct fours money.
The only thing that comes out of debt services is bonds or certificates of obligation public.
Public debt.
It cannot be collateral.
I don't know how the missions are going to continue to operate in the years to come.
And I think that, you know, I think that Newton County was one of the only counties that was using the debt services for collateral debt. That's where the rest of them have always used their conditional monies for their equipment. They've never, because that's how we found out that we weren't supposed to be using the debt services. It's because it's supposed to be just bonded debt. And it was just some mistreatment. I think years ago they changed it and it just was continued on Newton County until. Yeah, it's gonna be tough.
So that was impacting us in a negative way?
It was against the law. Totally against the law.
Okay. And my question.
If it wasn't done intentionally, it just, it's best, you cannot legally do what we could. Am I correct by saying that?
If you had to have it through another reader at the same time, you'd be, it'd be hard people.
Well.
Yeah. So the only way you can take it out of debt services is all, like for example, made some sort of plan where you were buying a large amount of equipment and pay for it with public debt. That's gonna be a one, or certificate of obligation, or a similar financing structure that has to go through the governor's office for approval because it qualifies as public debt.
And all of that, taxpayers have to vote to approve that. As far as that added.
The bond.
Yes, with the bond and a certificate of obligation.
Right, they have.
Yes, and then they appeal, and that's what happened with the jail.
Different ways, there are different forms of financing to qualify as public debt, but just financing something through a bank.
That's collateral debt.
Taxpayers have a free to be on the foot for.
I'm gonna try to make this motion, even though it's got my name on it, I normally don't, but I think it's a little bit. So I'm gonna make the motion that the court approved precinct four purchasing a boom mower from Beaumont Tractor to be financed through First Financial with Judge Cochran signing that contract and finance agreement at a later date.
Second. All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner Hoxton, all in favor? All against? All right.
Thank you.
Item number two, discuss and consider authorizing a budget amendment to provide mileage for the justice of the peace while they're on call. And that was brought up by Mike a couple of weeks ago that, you know, you had a call to Orange and it was, what, ninety-nine miles you drove? So they're using their own personal vehicle, buying their own gas. So I think on, while they're doing county business, you know, they should be able to charge the same mileage that somebody goes to school is able to charge the county. So current rate is seventy cents per mile, right? It was approved. So I think while they're on call, going to the inquest, jail duties, like Dana, she drives from Deweyville to jail what many times a week? So I think it's only fair that they are able to charge mileage for their, the times that they're on call. And they go to, on the inquests and they come into jail duty. It would, like, it would only affect precinct four and two the most. You know, Mike, he does precinct one and precinct one and four, right? Connie, two and four, like Carlos and Weirgo. Yeah, one and two, you know.
Yeah, one and two.
Unless you get a call like for the inquest in Orange.
So I think, I mean, I've, I've been saying since the day I got on the court that the boy shouldn't use a personal vehicle, county business, and not be compensated. Still feel that way. But we're making a policy for the JPs, or we're talking about the JPs, but reality is, should be a policy for Newton County employees, right? That when they use their personal vehicles to conduct county business. I mean, I'm not against what you got on here, I'm just saying, are we being less than inclusive by not making it a broader enlist and give specifics? Or do we need to come back and visit that later?
I think, I think it's all a matter of how. I don't think it's a matter of allowing somebody to reimburse, because if they're doing county business in a personal vehicle, they should be reimbursed. It's just a matter of whether that money is in the budget. I'm guessing that right now they would have the money in budgets to do that.
That's correct.
That's just a matter of funding.
So we're not, we're not, we're not saying, we're not voting on whether it's the right thing to do or not. We're voting on putting the money in there because it's absolutely.
Well, and some officers get a travel. You know.
But several, then that would be different.
Yes, like the county clerk, the tax assessor, they get a travel.
It's also fair, you're, I mean, and then you also turn college, you know, budgets. The JP said never provide mileage in their budget. Every year at budget planning, it needs to be anonymous, each one of their budgets that covered their mileage, as I said. Well, listen, I don't have knowledge of time, she has mileage of hers. I think pretty much all the offices have mileage, money. For some reason, they just.
I know, but this year we can't, you know, we can't add it to their salary because salaries are already. I know, we just think a bunch of them.
In mileage, money, every year, it's never gonna be part of their budget, I mean, their salaries. It's just going to be their line for their mileage. Unless the judge decides to pay them.
Travel.
Would be a thing for next year, but if, then, if you only give them twenty-one hundred and they spend more than that traveling back and forth, then they're still, at the end of the day, owe the money.
Well, the way to, the way to make it, the fairest way to do it is just pay for the mile.
Right.
That way you're not discriminating, treating someone different, just what you, what you maybe not earned, but what you acquire is actually what you're paid for.
My question is, like Sister Vanessa, takes a pause. That's thirty miles on her feet.
She can pay. And I, I know that the, the ladies that work in the tax office in Deweyville, as I understand it, when they go to Moreastville and make a deposit and come back, they get reimbursed for that, correct? So it's for different.
And, and I think that y'all have a mileage for the school, but they just don't have mileage for any county or even going back for this business. Now, if they go to school, they get paid, but they need for county business as far as going from one precinct to the other.
Yes, so everybody knows that I, or, at one time, we all got a vehicle. It was, I heard, three, six hundred. Yeah, I heard with eight thousand, two hundred, and she had. And that was part of our salary. But at that time, we could, it should have poured to raise our salaries up to what all other eleven two. But at that time, we made about seven thousand dollars less than everyone else. So to get our pay to equal with everyone else, we were forced to give up our vehicle. That was part of our salary, because no one else wanted us to make more than. We, at one time, had given that, that was the plan, to eliminate it. We did that. You just, everyone.
Well, you know, it's like the auditor said, it's, you know, so being paid for mileage, it's not for your salary at all. It's just reimbursement for wear and tear on your vehicle and use of vehicle. So it's, you know, for the general public that may be watching this, we're not talking about increasing the pay of anyone in the county. We're just talking about paying them what we owe them, because the way it is right now is they're making less than what is advertised when we post their salaries. Because their salaries is forty-eight thousand or thereabout, and then they spend, I'll just speak for the precinct four commissioner, JP, she spends a lot of money running back for jail. So her salary's decreased by three, four thousand dollars a year at her expense.
Well, what's the, what do y'all suggest we put in the line item for mileage?
I think that some of the, I guess, county.
Yeah. Now, how much, how much money, yeah, I was asking, how much money do you think would be appropriate?
You sound like me, Mike.
That ain't worth beating my heart out of it, that's about what I think.
Eighty-six miles round trip, I mean. And if I do that ten times a month. And I can't project. Yeah, and when I'm called, it's on call because I'm county. So that's the way we can actually explain that, there's four of us. So we do one month at a time. During that month, we handle the jail. And it used to be like on weekends, if y'all wanted a weekend to go do what you wanted to do, that JP was on call for the whole weekend for the whole county. That's how we paced it to where people could plan something.
Yes.
And not be on call. So we just look at it now as that month, you're just on call. So you understand where it's hard to predict for that.
So basically, you could, you could leave Deweyville and end up in Mayflower.
So if you said ten times, if you did the.
Same question, times in jail.
That's eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars, right?
Eight hundred and sixty miles.
Eight hundred and sixty.
That's a little.
Sixteen, seven, twenty-two, two.
Yeah, so.
Wait, you look, wait a minute, wait a minute, so you do that three times? Yeah, I'm talking about for the year, I ain't talking about for a month. So I just did it real quick on my phone, it still, right, that's two thousand dollars for just your jail travel.
If y'all was to do, when I was say, started out broadly, let's say with ten, ten thousand.
Ten thousand for all four. All four, didn't cover that.
So it's twenty-five hundred dollars in each, each lineup, for each, each budget for each JP?
No. Dana's gonna bust that. Now, you also, before we get too foreign this, as I understand and talk with you, because I called Dana about this and asked some questions. You guys have an opportunity to improve some systems to where you can do bonds, bails over a network, correct? And we're gonna be working toward where they don't have to drive up here, because my concern is not the money, it's Dana driving up here on the morning like we had, trying to get here early, let people out, it's foggy and rainy and what have you. So we're looking toward minimizing those trips with a video. So I think it's important, just so the court and everybody else, viewers and, knows that you guys are working toward that.
And the passion has set all of that up. You know, we were to the point of downloading documents. What we ran into, the problem was the jail. The jail has dispatchers, they had just, get a bad red, you need all hands on deck. You don't have one that just sits there that can stay with the inmate while we go through everything. That was kind of something we were working towards, kind of, maybe the secretary help out with that who's sitting there. Someone to witness the visual manifestation. So we kind of held off on that to not put the jail one up. So that's where we were. And I haven't talked to Shannon lately, but she can promise that we gathered, we got it down to the rock. That was kind of, that was for me, I guess, because I know what it's like when you're in there and you just can't say, hey, here, we just gotta see what this inmates.
You know, and.
Couldn't get a happy ending.
One thing we've said here today, and you, you mentioned Shannon Ponte several times. You know, we are not in contract with Shannon Ponte, but he is the person with Texas Computers Associates, right? That's the name of the company? That when we call and he comes, it turns into ten minutes versus two and a half hours. You know, so he's a.
He has to wait, you know.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, if we could finish it to the end of it. That would help, the visual. That's the same, you know, when I was traveling like that, that is a one of the.
So we had ten thousand, all four budgets. No, 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 I'm just saying, divided four ways. You need, if we put thirty-five hundred in yours, two thousand Mike, two thousand precinct one, and the next for this one is Weirgate, Ms. Carla, so.
You're having to do it in each one?
I mean, well.
Not in mileage line, and I can just.
We can add money to each individual budget line.
Put a dollar.
Money to that mileage line.
I think if one time, if you had a, if you had a line item in your budget at one time where you got four thousand of mileage, which, which, thank.
It was three within the other, and then four. Three, two. Which average.
We can do that, but I added that one for everything. Yeah.
Of the added, this, this remit down in, in very.
Two thousand for you, three thousand for precinct two, two thousand for Mike, and two thousand for Connie, is that right?
No. If you want to cut the.
I don't, I don't ever have two thousand dollars worth of it here. See that happen. It'll roll over, it'll be there when you need it. You have an unusual year or something for your day.
The thing is, when you're in the general fund, general fund money doesn't roll over like your money. There's all, they all rolls back into one debt.
We need to be close to what's gonna be required, whatever, what they have to his brother here. We will have exceptions.
So whose brother, Carla or Connie?
Carla. Carla's probably, went miles. Connie, twelve.
So then why don't you do fifteen for three?
Ten miles.
Ten for three.
Four for four. Twenty-five for one, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty-five for two, and then two thousand for one. That would be, I mean, I don't know.
And, and you know, we talked, we talked about it not rolling over. Whatever's not spinning is filling, goes back into general fund, so it goes right back to the taxpayers and the judge the following year to use it. Maybe not in the budgeting process, but in support of the county.
Or less than, if at least, to theirs, if they go over.
Yeah, if we can do a line item transfer, we could do that. If we say that you're not using that much, if I'm not using more, we can transfer money from your line to your.
Okay.
We're gonna get old money.
That's okay. If they two, and I'm on charge.
Hey, Mike, it hasn't been approved yet, you can't do it.
And don't walk that stirring up my little community now, we're quiet.
Thank you all.
So. Yeah.
It's not really, you're giving precinct four four thousand.
Yes.
If I.
It's available if you, if you have to.
It's not like I'm saying, oh, one of the southern, that's not what that is.
That's.
Yeah.
That way every month, we won't have this on, every other month, we won't have one of these. The approved individuals, the money's already there, you can take care of your business again.
How better for budget?
Yeah.
A budget about what we're averaging, but like I say, it's never, none of what we do can be projected.
Well, yeah, deaths certainly aren't projected on it.
Deaths can be projected.
Yeah, I'm gonna make.
What's in the jail can't be.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we add ten thousand dollars to be split among precinct one, two, three, and four, justice of the peace budget. So you said for a county travel allowance. Yes, available for mileage reimbursement.
And that will cover the Florida Department of the Bank, because it's off.
Yes.
We scan all our.
So just to be clear, is to cover mileage for anything other than back and forth to work where you use your county vehicle, or your personal vehicle for county business? Driving to work, that don't cover it, and I know, we all know this, but if you're driving to work, you're not paid to and from work. If you get in your car and go to lunch, you're not paid for that. Is, when you get to work, if you leave work in your personal vehicle and conduct county business, you get paid that mileage tip.
Second that motion.
All right, motion made by me. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? All right, item number three, budget amendment. And I think we just went over that.
Yeah, yes. I mean, we're all doing that, we're ready to hear that.
Okay, we need, we need, okay, vote on it, it's a separate item.
The budget.
On the agenda.
Yes.
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 So I make the motion that we make a budget amendment of ten thousand dollars to be split between the justice of the peace, JP one, two, three, and four budget for mileage reimbursement.
Second.
All right, motion made by me. Second by Commissioner Hoxton, all in favor? All right, bill paid.
Okay, so normally this is our normal, bill pay is a special because the sheriff's department has found a vehicle for a chief's pursuit purpose. They say used vehicle that has low mileage and they're needing a landmark vehicle for the chief.
Emergency investigation. You know, we think about, all sorts of things, like eight, one, two, three, year, Allison, clean your vehicle. Now, it's a reputable, even if you have it's other brokerage agencies. If you've ever got it before, I think that's got thirty-one thousand miles on it. Thirty-one thousand, I already think that, plus it's thirty-two thousand over dollars.
Yes, it's thirty-six thousand, eight O A, it's twenty-two double A, uh, Colorado, uh, it's wide, it's a landmark. This company, from what I understand, they basically get vehicles from other agencies and they clean them up. They make sure that there's no problems with them, and then they turn it, sell them. Purchasing equipment would help to go out because they're asking thirty-two thousand for a, for this vehicle. The sheriff's department went out for two other quotes. They couldn't get one for exactly the same year model, same mileage, so they just went with, with just the same vehicle. So the new vehicle, actually, this one's like twenty-something thousand dollars cheaper than the other, the purchase they found. Colton did have the money in his, a vehicle fund to purchase it. And so I'm asking the court to approve this, to write a check for this vehicle. Captain and the chief deputy are going down there to this place and it says, from what they told me, that if everything goes right, they want to take the check and hence they can keep with the vehicle. If it's not, they get down there and it's not what they want, they're going to bring the check back to me, we're gonna bring the check out and we're gonna start over.
So, so it's a good discussion for everyone to see, but you don't need to approve anything other than bill pay.
Exactly, that's why, but I'm just telling everybody because.
That's good.
It's essential bill pay.
Yeah.
It's a precaution here, because it's not a normal bill pay, or bill pays next week. And I just wanted everybody to know the reason why the urgency for this bill pay for those guys can go down.
The one thing to add, God's very particular, so they want to make a check with them, they like it, rather than make the trip and look at it and go back and say, hey, we want it. Go ahead and bring your check down there.
Well, it's, it's the right thing to do, so you're not spending time and money and taxpayers' dollars making two trips. I make the motion to approve bill pay.
Okay. All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against? You know, this is a, it's hard to get a comparable on a used vehicle.
Yeah.
We run into the same thing on the tractor that Philip bought, you know, you couldn't get a comp on it because it's, it's just, it's used. So there's very few of them out there that gonna be the same package, same going for police pursuits over Rado, you know, with, with lights and everything, that's a good truck.
You know, that, that human policy, it's, there's always gonna be people that don't approve what we do, but when you come in here and talk about it in front of a group of people in an open session, I mean, that's what it's really all about, is trying to make sure that we procure things openly and consistently, so.
All right, we move on to item number five. Discuss and approve contract between Newton County and Emergency Services District Six for the May third, twenty-twenty-five special election. Right, E S D number six, which is the emergency, emergency medical services that was just created. They had their first meeting last night and they approved to go on the ballot in May for a sales tax election. So for the county to hold the election for the emergency services district, KK can come up with a contract. And as far as county, we just need to approve it.
So I've asked this several times, I'm gonna ask it the time we talk about this, I think just this contract and what we're doing with this E S D prevent Acadian from providing emergency services for precinct four if they choose to continue to do that, is that correct?
I think it's correct.
That, for Boston, we negotiate contracts. So once, this has to be known, the election has to be known, so we have funds to be able to contract.
Right.
And then once that is done, then that's when we go into those contract things. But that right there is the most important thing, is people down south, understanding that's not intended to know. Nobody wants anybody to be without any type of insurance. And we, of course, want them to use Acadian, that's why. You know, you got an Acadian ambulance that can get there, let them go.
And I think that, you know, the way you guys, or the judge has structured that E S D board by putting Representative Alan Cogier, I think, from the fire department in Deweyville on it, that'll be a good voice to the public down there. And I would just ask that that E S D gets ahead of that even before the election and starts talking about that with the public down in precinct four.
They did discuss, um, their next meeting is February the seventh, I believe, to eighth meeting. Um, they're gonna schedule some more, um, places to go and talk. They're planning on going this Wednesday because the gentleman, the fleet of vans on board, their potluck.
It's actually tonight. It, it was, it said Wednesday, the fourth, but the day's the fourth, so I think there was a, I was printing.
Well, um, they're gonna go to the potluck, it's the lead event, and kind of try to discuss it because, of course, that's a good opportunity. They wanna go to Trout Creek, they wanna go to Duveeville, um, any little area that they can go and discuss it. There are several that wanna go and come talk about it in the public access. So the people understand, but they're, they are gonna plan some dates to actually go and speak publicly about this.
Yep.
It works. It's new, but
Yeah, I just
They're working.
I just wanted, you know, the reason you put this on here is why I just said this, keep it in front of people. I want, this is to be more supportive and not take any kind of emergency services away from anyone that's already existing.
Me, that's the most important thing, especially for our citizens down south, the, the real lives have never changed. I don't want them to think that it's gonna take anything away from them.
Right.
And that's the main goal. We're not, uh, the main goal is hopefully provide everybody with an EMS service and not take anything away from anybody that already has. The main goal is provide for the areas that are not covered, which is basically from this side of, uh, Devil's Pocket to the north end of the county.
And at the end of the day, February or May of two thousand and twenty-five, the people of Newton County will decide whether there's a sales tax or not. We're not doing that as a court. We're just supporting, we're supporting the process to allow the election to happen so that people can decide.
Yes.
It's on there so we can discuss it if anybody has questions and be out there. This is what the internet.
So I make a motion that we approve the contract between Newton County and Emergency Services District Number Six for the May third, twenty-twenty-five special election. Second. All right, motion is made by me, second by Commissioner Hopson. All in favor? All against? All right. Now I need my motion from the left side of the table.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
I second.
One of these days, we're gonna get to do that.
Well, it's always been a, it's always been, you know, when I say right hand clap, it's your turn.